Take place, whether that be through sending packets to all of our high schoolers in their beginning of the year, like folder with all of the forms they get for school, or this can be.
At least from what we're seeing.
Councilmember Srinivasan, are you able to hear us?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. We're able to hear you. Okay, and our live stream is back up, so Mayor, we can resume the meeting.
Thank you. Peggy B., followed by Charlene L.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Peggy Shenbister. I am the Vice President of Sunnyvale School District, speaking on my own behalf here. I just want to first acknowledge the composition of this room and thank our Chairs, Vice Chairs, Councilman Mayor, and all of our public servants here in attendance. I think this is wonderful. I am also here to speak on behalf of Youth Voice in our Commissions and Boards and making sure there are designated spaces for that. Those of you that know me know my passion in leadership development. In establishing Sunnyvale for Equity and Education, we have made, we have driven some leadership forums in my work with Leadership Sunnyvale. My project was to create pipelines of leadership. I see some of my fellow groupmates here as well. I think this is really important for us to establish these opportunities for civic engagement and for leadership. This is, as Maddie said, a great way for us to lead the way in the South Bay. I'm very proud of Sunnyvale, the way that we are progressive and forward-thinking. And if we're going to have dialogue about the future of our city, let's include the future of our city. So we have them sitting right here. Maddie calls me and says, I want you to show up for this, and this is very important. Yes, I will, Maddie. We have future leaders right here. And I know that many of you are also recognizing the stress of the trauma of our systems of government right now, collapsing in many ways by misguided leadership. So this is a, this is a chance for us to grassroots from our city, establish ways for our youth to participate in government, to recognize how things move, how to drive operational change, how to change policy, how to move systems, because we can all see that this is very much needed in this moment, this rebuilding of our community. And this is a great opportunity for us to do that. So I would encourage you all to, to listen to the voice of the people and to have staff look at different ways to include youth in many different ways. There are so many opportunities. And to continue involving our youth in all of these conversations that we're having going forward. That's how we teach. That's how we learn. We scaffold this learning. We, we, we create our future leaders. What a great opportunity this is. Thank you for your consideration. Good night.
Thank you. And lastly is Charlene L.
Hello. Thank you for taking my input. My name's Charlene Lu, and I also support youths on commissions. And the main reason is the youths are just being from our city process for the most part. In fact, not just youths, but everybody in their first half-century of life. There are some exceptions, but we just don't have enough young people. And youths who want to be engaged. We are so lucky that we have such youths. And why don't we take advantage of that? I'm a mom of two children who are just beyond their youth age, although just, just in their later adolescence. And I know when they were in high school, I would consult them for various things, about the latest trends, about what kind of policies they would want in schools. And so I took their, they were, they were and still are very thoughtful people. So I think having youths on commissions are important. And, and in particular, as you all know, I'm, I'm interested in BPAC the most. That's what I always follow. And we need youths there in particular, because we are building safe roads. Primarily, they are the biggest dependents on safe roads. They cannot drive, and they need to be able to get around independently. And so we don't currently have their viewpoint. We try to represent them, but who are we in the second half-century of our lives to represent them? They need to be there themselves. So I would really appreciate having youths on BPAC. And then my other point is not having to do with youths, and I don't think you guys talked about it at this meeting, but I know in past meetings you have. So I just wanted to mention about the Transportation Commission. Now, if we develop a new commission where we get rid of BPAC and we have a Transportation Commission instead, that's all fine. It's just a change in nomenclature, but it's also including other transportation modes, which is important to integrate that. But I want to say that it's important in this commission composition to find commissioners who are interested in both biking and mass transit. And I say those two modes in particular, because most, the vast majority of people in our city do not do them. And so how can they be the useful commissioners if they don't want to do them and if they don't want to promote them? So we have to find people who want to promote both biking and mass transit, either, but both. You have to have that rounded viewpoint in order to really build out our sustainable transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last speaker card in the room. Speaker, do we have any remote speakers wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor. First up is Satya D., followed by Martin P. Satya, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the City Council.
Thank you, but good evening, City Council. Of course, as you know, my name is Satya Diddy, and I'm a high school student who wants to get more involved in the city. And I want to add on to tonight's discussion, like many other people, about the youth representation on city commissions. So until recent Instagram outreach, I didn't even know that high school students were eligible to serve on commissions. That alone shows how important communication and visibility are to us in general. I believe that if young people knew that these opportunities existed, I'm confident many of us would apply and bring real dedication and effort to the work. If there's one thing high schoolers do well, it's making sure our voices are heard. And in this case, we'd be representing hundreds of students who care about their community, but may not know how to get involved. Adding youth seats would give a direct line of perspective that may have not always been included, and continuing to share these opportunities on social media, especially Instagram, would make a huge difference in awareness and engagement in our community. Thank you for considering greater youth involvement, and I truly believe in contribute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Martin P., followed by Joshua C. Martin, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the City Council.
Hi, Martin Pine, Planning Commissioner, speaking solely on my own behalf tonight. I just wanted to reiterate some comments that I've made previously, that especially in light of the new, I'll slow down. I'd just like to reiterate that in light, some comments I've made previously, that in light of changes, the recent elimination, I should probably say, of the study issue process, I think we should be taking a close look on how commissions give recommendations regarding the annual budget. This is a man, but this is a mandate under current council policy 7219. I don't think we do it very, I don't think we do it very effectively right now. Frequently, that feedback comes after the budget workshop, which is too late to be useful. And I think that's something that should be evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Joshua C. Joshua, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the City Council.
All right. Hello, Sunnyvale City Government. My name is Joshua Chernoda. I'm currently a high school junior at Fremont High School, invested in advocating for youth leadership and representation in city government. Firstly, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to talk today about the proposed seat, reserved seat for youth on city commissions. This monumental SEP is such a great way to include youth here. I will bring up three talking points about how Youth Voice exists, what we can do about it, and how youth can actually make a difference in city government. So first of all, many, Youth Voice is not reaching the commissions that are currently in place. Many students want to be involved in government and make a difference. I personally know a student who was committed to increasing Asian-American participation in government, and she's been doing this through panels, inviting students to attend, and have been met with lots of positive feedback. And many students in law and business electives are looking for real-world experience and want to apply their knowledge with this fresh perspective, which I think Sunnyvale could totally use. Additionally, another reason that students haven't been applying is that the process feels very intimidating, hard to navigate, and honestly, isn't marketed as well as it should be. The city must actively communicate that youth, youth voices are valued and wanted. And I don't think that that is truly being expressed as much as it should be. For example, I didn't know that youth were actually encouraged to apply to commissions until just recently, when I found an Instagram post. And then how youth can actually make a difference on government is that recently, like before this meeting, I went up to a lot of my friends, and I asked them, what would you do if you had a voice in Sunnibel government? And the most common response I was met with was that, I have a voice in Sunnibel government? They were very confused that they were actually, their opinion was valued. So that, I think, is the biggest thing that we need to advertise to our youth. And then finally, youth would participate if they knew they could on things like parks and rec, transportation, and bringing a fresh perspective to those commissions that are definitely needing some more input and could use some more youth input specifically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the final remote public speaker for this agenda item.
Thank you very much. With that, we will close the public comment on this item and bring it back to our Chairs and Vice Chairs. Chair Vice.
Thank you, Mayor. Considering what we've just heard, logistically, what do we do now to try and make it happen so that our youth can be involved in our boards and commissions?
So I'll, I'll ask City Manager, yeah, go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna reiterate, you were, we're referring things to the council subcommittee, so we would address it in that way, so it'll get followed up on.
Thank you. Chair Rivera.
Thank you, and appreciation of the comments of everyone here today. And also have a question on, at one point in time, also being a Fremont High alum in the area, there's a Teen Advisory Board and Teen Advisory Committee that is involved in events of city planning with high school students. If there's a current connection or way we can leverage individuals who are already involved, or maybe connections to getting high school students involved in Leadership Sunnyvale, if those are potential possibilities as well. And also, second thing, the involvement of students in the public transportation piece, as many do either walk to and from, bike, or utilize VTA to get to their schools and their classes. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and I want, do want to bring up one thing. We don't actually, and I know this is boards and commissions, but from a committee standpoint, having the, the TAC coming to council as either the TAC Chair and the Teen Advisory Commission, conceivably, the Chair and Vice Chair should be invited to this. And I don't think we've done it historically. And I think conceivably, that should be part of this process. And I know it's kind of an adjunct to the standard Brown acted commissions that we run. That being said, go ahead.
So say, Mayor, that, that is something to consider. This is typically for councils, boards, and commissions, right? The Teen Advisory Committee and several other committees are staff advisory. So they're not advisory directly to the City Council, and they're not appointed by council.
Right.
And part of why they're not covered by the Brown Act is because they don't take direction from council. So it could complicate the way that they are made up and the way they operate if they're coming to give feedback and get direction from council instead of staff.
And, and I appreciate that. I do think that getting their voice directly to council or, or, you know, it's like, for me, and I appreciate what the Chairs and Vice Chairs do on their, on their subjects of expertise and what their commissions and boards are doing on their areas of responsibility. That being said, feeding that information into the TAC of what is going in front of the different boards and commissions has also a kind of a secondary item, I guess, I do think has value. And it's like, as, as we've heard from many of the youth tonight, you know, they would like a seat at the table for these boards and commissions, but since we already really have, and it's staff advisory, but at least from an educational standpoint, I do think that, that conceivably, what's on the docket for each of these boards and commissions could be at least given to the TAC as, if you want a voice in sustainability, in, in, you know, planning, in art, in, you know, all the different topics that we have. They have an opportunity to make their voice heard, whether or not it's through email, through, through Zoom meeting, through being here in person. So I do think that that does have value. And whether or not they, we've never had them, in my nine years on council, we've never had the TAC actually here. And I do think that even that, you know, it's advisory to, to staff, but the concept that, that it's, it's advisory on where the state of the city is in, from a teen standpoint, and I do think that it has value. But that's my, my takeaway. Next up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to echo Commissioner Pine's point about commission feedback on the budget. I think that's something that's actually very important. And it gets to some of the things that Chair Kesting was bringing up earlier, because, you know, for a long time, like, we think, okay, the study issue process, the study issue process, but, you know, prior to last month, this is how you get things changed in the city. But there's also the budget, and the budget is absolutely critical document. And having effective board and commission feedback on that is important. My experience with the, when I was a commissioner, was that it was a very uneven process. I, so that's one thing I'd like to raise. The other thing I would like to raise, I do think that having a consideration of youth commission members or non-voting youth seats is important, but I'd like to ask what the implication of that is when we have appointed voting youth members of city commissions, right? Is that going to mean that, well, are we just not gonna appoint youth, members, members of the youth to full commission seats anymore, because, well, there's the dedicated youth seat? So that's a thing worth considering. And I, you know, I imagine this is, I, I certainly hope this comes back to the committee on the Subcommittee for Boards and Commissions. But I would encourage the advocates who've come and spoken on this issue tonight to think about that and consider, you know, what you want to see here and what dynamics that might create. So those are the comments I have on that. I do think it is really important that we get youth engagement in commissions. Definitely think that in general, increasing social media engagement for our commissions would be highly valuable. Having more targeted outreach to the high schools and community colleges is very worthwhile. I'm interested in the idea of youth commission seats, but like I said, I, I want us to think carefully about how that would interact when we, as a council, have put voting youth commissioners on seats. It might be best to, for instance, limit the non-voting seats to charter commissions, which cannot have youth members, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Vice Mayor Sal.
I think it would be great if the Subcommittee, who is looking at the commissions, could come up with some proposals of incorporating more youth voices on the commissions. And, and also, if possible, if they could get input from youth that would want to give input on that organization, just as more ideas. So I know we have really great people, really great council members on the Subcommittee, so I defer to them to think about it. But me, as a council member, I know from my many years of working with youth that they are a strong voice, they have great ideas, they have an infinite amount of energy, and so their input is invaluable. So I would want to make sure that we have that on our commissions, if possible, in a very productive way. So some thought needs to be put into that, as Councilmember Mellinger said, because we want to make sure that their time is useful and that it's utilized in a really productive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up is Councilmember Srinivasan.
Thank you, Mayor. As I see, there are two issues. One is the youth participation in the commission directly. The second is the input of youth in the commission. For that, we need to make sure that, I, I know the first issue the Subcommittee will be looking at. The second issue is also very important, that is, making sure that our youth will know about the agenda, commission meetings, and other forums. So for that, what I would suggest is, is there a way for, for our youth to not only get on the mailing list, which is a straightforward thing, but more importantly, forwarding all these agenda items to their social network and their network? Not all people want to be on the mailing list. Not they should be. There are other channels like Instagram and then TikTok and other social media, which city doesn't participate. So I would urge our city staff to look into the opportunity of ability to forward our agenda items of any commission to our youth, so that they can send it across to their network. So that will improve the participation of our youth, and we will hear their voices in our commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chang.
Thank you. I agree with the sentiments on expanding youth representation. I also want the Subcommittee to look at the SB 707 updates. The council liaison is able to join from Zoom, and many of our commissioners are volunteers, and sometimes they travel or are sick. So I would like to see if we can look at that for more flexibility as well.
Thank you. Any final comments from boards and Chairs? Chair Vice?
Why does the city ask if an applicant has voted? What's the reason behind that on our applications for boards and commissions?
I think, so historically, I think it was just to see, are you part of the, are you part of the process? And I think that for, for many of this, so it's, it's, are you active in your community? Are you making your voice heard? I, I'll leave it at that. I, you know, it's been there for years. It's been there, I think, as long as I was on the commission 20 years ago.
Is it worth maybe relooking at, possibly?
We'll talk to the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of have the exact same comment. I, I, oh, thank you so much. I had roughly the same comment. I completely forgot that I had to checkmark that box, you know, that, are you registered to vote? And, and to be quite frank, I've run into a bunch of kids in the city, and I tell them that they should just apply for the commissions and see what happens. My memory is the last go-around for commissions. We had a lot of people apply for, for spots. I have zero problems with someone under 18 being on the commission, much less having a voting capacity on the commission. I see no reasons for not having something like that. If that meant we had to increase the number of commissions, commissioners that we have, we currently have five, right? I mean, if we were to increase that by two and have six, seven seats, that seems completely reasonable to me.
Right. And, and several of the charter, several of the commissions that are under the charter have the voting requirement. So, so there's a difference between when was the last time you voted and are you registered to vote? And some of them actually require voter registration. So that's, there's two different boxes from that standpoint. And, thank you. Anything else? Okay. I just want to thank you all for joining. Thank you for the commissioners and Chairs and Vice Chairs that are also in the audience. This is valuable, you know, and remember that you always have an opportunity to pull aside your liaison or just pull, you know, email your, your favorite council member, Vice Mayor or Mayor, with any issues that you might have and any ideas that you have. But thank you very much, and, and the Subcommittee will be looking at this. With that, I see no other comments from staff. We will adjourn the special joint meeting at 6:57, and we will start again in three minutes. Thank you. Good evening. Let's call door to the council meeting of November 18th, 2025 at 7:06 PM. First, Councilmember Srini Vasan. Do you have a statement that you'd like to make?
Yes, Mayor. I am participating remotely in tonight's council meeting under the Just Cause provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act included in California Government Code, Section 54953 J2. There is no individual 18 years of age or older present in the room at my remote location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents. We are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. This council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means that council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by council for consent calendar or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within council's authority, generally referred to as council's subject matter jurisdiction. If a, if a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule that speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the council agenda. Scan the QR code on the screen or click the language access and translation link on the council agenda to read and listen along in more than 60 different languages. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda or the presentation item must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close the, close, prior to the time I close the public hearing on that agenda item. Speaker comments are requests, speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for that specific item and time limits will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the council agenda. First, please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call. City Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sell.
Present.
Councilmember Cisneros. Councilmember Mollinger.
Present.
Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Present.
Councilmember Chang.
Present.
Councilmember Lei. Five present with Councilmember Srini Vasan participating via teleconference and Councilmembers Cisneros and Lei absent.
Thank you. Next up is our closed session report. Vice Mayor, may we please have the closed session report?
Okay. We had a item number zero conference with legal counsel initiating litigation, initiating litigation pursuant of paragraph four, subdivision D, section 54956 dot nine, potential case. So direction was given to initiate litigation. Once the litigation has commenced, the defendant and other details will be provided to any person upon inquiry. Item number A, conference with labor negotiator, agency designated representative, Sarah Johnson Rios, Assistant City Manager, Employee Organization, Communication Officers Association. Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a special order of the day. Let me come to the lectern. Before we begin tonight's meeting, we have a special recognition. We would like to recognize the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Small Business Saturday is dedicated to the promotion of small businesses nationwide and to recognize the resilience over the years. We are joined in a special recognition by a staple in our small community, Lee Odom. Please come forward. The owner of Lee's favorite books and of course, the children's bookstore, Bookasaurus. Lee fosters a sense of community, running events and clubs that offer residents an opportunity to engage and build bonds throughout Sunnyvale. Some of these events include author signings, multiple monthly book clubs. The book clubs don't actually just benefit the readers and followers of Lee's books. They're just, they're also meetings at local restaurants. The clubs integrate into this in support our wider small business community. It's these types of small businesses and especially the interconnections that they can create, which make our community that much richer and help our community thrive. Lee, you know, I just want to first thank you for, for what you've provided for so many years in our community. And I would love for you to say a few words.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I really appreciate and very grateful for the support of my community. Without you, we wouldn't be here. So thank you. I'm really passionate about bringing community to Sunnyvale. When we moved here, it was, it was kind of sleepy at first. And I have a passion to bring book clubs and ways for people to connect, either in the store. We've, we've had couples meet in the store. Someone got married once in the store. We've seen a lot of dates go through. We have book clubs where people get together and you can just speak freely about a book. We have author events. And I just, I want to get people, give people a reason to come out and connect with people that they wouldn't normally connect with. You know, people in different age groups or different backgrounds, hear what they thought about a book. So thank you so much. I really, I really appreciate this. Come out on Saturday. It's Small Business Saturday. We're going to have some really fun gifts for people. We have a, some special tote bags that are unique to Sunnyvale. We also are revealing our new Lee's Favorite Books tote bag. So that's, that's a new thing. And then we have some other fun gifts and shop local pins. So come on out, celebrate with us. If not, just have a refreshment. Thank you. Thank you so much.
So we just stay for one more. The city of Sunnyvale proudly supports our local small businesses with over 5,700 small businesses, including over 350 eating establishments, which I've been to quite a number of, and over 400 personal service providers in Sunnyvale. We have a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the small business owners and what they're providing in our community. The small businesses comprise over 90% of the local business community. So on behalf of the city of Sunnyvale, it is my pleasure to declare Saturday, November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in Sunnyvale. I encourage all of our residents to visit a local establishment like Lee's Favorite Books, like Bookasaurus. You know, they are unique to our downtown and, you know, as much as people buy online, buy local as much as you can. So, so please support our Sunnyvale economy. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, everyone who shops local. You really do make a difference in our business owners and our community. Thank you and thank you, Lee. Next, we have a special presentation. We have a joint legislative update from Assemblymember Patrick Ehrens and State Senator Dr. Ayesha Wahab. Assemblymember Ehrens, thank you for joining us here this evening. Please come to the lectern. And I think you have a slideshow that will be pulled up very quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello. It is really great to be here to give you all a legislative update to the largest city in my state assembly district, Sunnyvale. And I will just say it's been quite a year in the legislature and for all of us. And I'm really grateful to the mayor and the council for being one of the, helping be one of the best well-run cities in not only Silicon Valley, but the state of California. And really just want to appreciate how much my office has greatly enjoyed being able to work with all of you and advocating for the best interests of Sunnyvale. And as my first year, it's been very fortunate to be able to work with Dr. Ayesha Wahab in representing Sunnyvale's interests in Sacramento. And I will also say that I also did bring a few dates to that bookstore. So thank you, Lee. It's been quite the budget challenge in the state of California. But despite that, my colleagues and I passed our 2025, 26 California state budget. In it, we have allocated and prioritized the needs of many of the residents that have been calling and emailing into our office, which is include, including $52 million in additional funding for our food banks, many resources of which we are directing to Sunnyvale Community Services, the Bill Wilson Center and other nonprofits that's directly serve Sunnyvale. We have increased state funding for affordable housing by preserving $500 million in low-income housing tax credits, a $60 million one-time funding to support students, a student block grant, $5 million in one-time funds to support financial aid and outreach for community college students, and saved $4.6 million for the 2025, 26 year and $14 million in the 26, 27 year for our CalWorks program, as well as over $100 million to support organizations serving crime survivors. I've passed my first bill that the governor texted me about, which makes me officially a lawmaker to decriminalize truancy in the state of California. As many of you all know, the last thing we need to be doing is fining up to $2,000 or threatening imprisonment of parents who, whose students are truant. The data doesn't suggest that that helps our students go to school more and common sense doesn't. And so I'm really proud to work with our Silicon Valley delegation and the state of California to officially decriminalize that in January. In addition, my office, just a few highlights, and I would like to then open it up for any questions. My district office was really proud to have my district director, Victoria Lowe, here and Victoria Pham. Way, Victoria. Say hello. That's my district director and Victoria Pham is one of my field representatives. And if there's anyone else named Victoria here who would like to work for the people of California, they can apply. But we've helped over 400 constituents this past year with direct casework. We've helped secure over $110,000 in EDD benefits for community members who are struggling to get the support that they need. Since taking office, I've joined or hosted more than 1,400 meetings and events throughout Cupertino, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, and San Jose, listening to residents, small business owners, educators, and local leaders. We've partnered with over 43 community events from community coffee chats to resource fairs, table at major festivals like Silicon Valley Fall Fest. We've connected over, with over 12,000 constituents at these events and served more than 1,200 meals through community coffees and our signature internship and volunteer programs. We've also built a very strong volunteer network where we're trying to be as visible and transparent as possible, including volunteering at many schools in and around Sunnyvale. I've really appreciated the partnerships that we have developed together. Part of our job is obviously lawmaking in Sacramento, but it's also about staying connected to see what we can do to help our everyday residents. Just this past week, we were able to secure $20,000 for the Bill Wilson Center to serve tutoring for the Sunnyvale Shelter, as well as participate in a laptop giveaway where we secured 250 laptops. Many of those laptops went to Sunnyvale Community Services, the Bill Wilson Center, and a litany of other really notable nonprofits who are here serving directly the needs of everyday residents in Sunnyvale. My first signature event was My first signature event was our Policy and Pancakes event this upcoming January. We're going to have it again at the Sunnyvale Senior Center where constituents can write directly to me their bill ideas. Not all ideas should become a law, but we shouldn't be getting all of our bill ideas out of the infinite wisdom of Sacramento or special interests. They should come from people who see problems and want to see them fixed in our community. So we offer the public the ability to submit bill ideas to me, as well as ideas that should not become a law or things that need to be repealed. I'm grateful to work with also our mobile home park community with Gail Robino and other Sunnyvale lus to addressing some of the issues that we are seeing with our recent housing laws that have been enacted and making sure that we're not leaving our source of affordable housing and our mobile home park community behind by working, getting commitments to work with many of my colleagues to address those issues as well. So a lot, a lot in there, but overall, I'm grateful to, to the bills that we've signed. I'm grateful for the money that we've been able to secure for our district. I'm grateful for my staff and the city of Sunnyvale's excellent city manager's office, who've just been real professionals in helping us advocate for Sunnyvale. And I almost went to as many meetings and events as the mayor, but no one can quite be as, as many as you are, Mayor Klein. But I appreciate that he is the mayor that calls me the most and asks me what I'm doing for Sunnyvale on a pretty regular basis. So I appreciate the partnership. I'm looking forward to the many more events that we have upcoming and really grateful to work with Senator Wahab in representing the city of Sunnyvale. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Ehrens, and thanks for the presentation and the update. Next, we have Senator Dr. Wahab on the line. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Definitely. Thank you, guys. So I'm your state senator, Dr. H. Wahab. I'm very proud to represent this district. I know that, you know, a lot of the times, you know, folks don't exactly know exactly where we spend our time. And I, I just want to shed some light on that. I want to be able to address any questions and kind of go over just the year of work that we had behind us. So if you take a look at our slide deck and I'll go through each one of them. I, I want to say that this year was largely marred with the fact that we had the worst fires in, in California's history. And I'm actually standing in front of a photo right there in LA. We went to the Palisades and Altadena and some of the neighboring areas. And that is something that we spend a lot of time to work on, not only on legislation, but policy and budget overall to basically tackle some of the issues that we're going to have with our climate issues. Sustainability, you know, wildfire resiliency and much more. So I'll, I'll go through some of it. We were able to also honor our nonprofit of the year that services a lot of families. And I'm actually very proud of this nonprofit. It's been around for nearly 30 years. It's the Friends with Children with Special Needs. It is very under the radar, in my opinion, but they service so many people from cradle to graduation. They have spent time with folks with special needs, but also their families and really have created a community. So I'm very proud to at least highlight those two things and some of the work we did there. But I'll go to the next slide and really give you guys a rundown of what we've done. You know, Assemblymember Ehrens actually talked about our investment in housing. I will say I am the chair of housing. This is my first year as chair of housing in the Senate. And I, I want to flag how kind of the budget conversations have happened. In January, the governor typically rolls out his budget and we spend the next six months debating over each line item. And I have previously, you know, worked on the budget as chair of Sub Five. And right now I'm, I'm a member of the Budget Committee as well. And so I really try to advocate for the things that people need most. You know, it was mentioned regarding food security, but I also want to extend that to a lot of the concerns our district has, including local legal aid to those folks dealing with immigration concerns. And I think in our district, we have a significant population. I represent both Alameda County and Santa Clara County. And we worked with our counties to make sure that the Bay Area is taken care of in a lot of different ways. But as far as housing being the number one issue across the state, I want to highlight that we fought specifically, and I will highlight on the next slide as well. The Dream for All is a down payment assistance program for first-time homebuyers. We put in $300 million here. And that was a specific effort on behalf of my team because that is something that I think a lot of people, especially in the Bay Area, struggle with. I will also flag that we put in another $500 million to the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program that largely supports local cities tackling our homeless effort and addressing the homelessness crisis with accountability measures, of course. This, when it was originally introduced for the budget of this past year in January, it was at $0. And I, I really want to highlight how much we work to make sure that we put in money so our local mayors and city council can actually address what's happening in their communities. We also put in low-income housing tax credits at $500 million and $120 million for multifamily housing program. This is specifically to create and, and construct deeply affordable housing. But also, many of you guys have been working with developers with LI-Tec, as they call it, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, and making sure that current housing projects are rebuilt and kind of built to our standard for today and making sure that the developments that we have now still are viable in the future. So a lot of people rely on this money. This is just the tip of the iceberg of what we did on housing, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in the next slide. Next slide, please. So I like to really do the work. And I will say that this was a wonderful year in regards to legislation. SB 681 was not like any other bill. Most bills are just a couple pages. My bill, SB 681, was rolled into the budget and signed into law this July. And I, I want to flag how important SB 681 is. It was over 60 pages long. And I highlight that because it, it was an effort for me for more than a year where I wanted to be able to do something for renters, for the first-time homebuyer, for those that have their first home, for those that are dealing with land. And a lot of the conversations that took place actually comes from our district. Now, I'll give you guys an example. Our zombie mortgage protections that got rolled into the budget this year. I had a constituent, a business owner, who called me and said, hey, Ayesha, I just got hit with a letter that says, I owe thousands upon thousands of dollars for a mortgage that I thought I foreclosed and declared bankruptcy on. And I'm getting hit with 15 years of fines and penalties and late fees and the original loan in itself. And I said, how is that even possible? So we looked into it and the, the truth of the matter is that this zombie mortgage protection that we made into law just this year is the strongest in the nation. What we are seeing, NPR did a story as well as Bloomberg and many others across the nation, debt collectors are going after people who 15 years ago during the Great Recession thought that they were, you know, free and clear and they, they filed for bankruptcy and they lost their homes and you name it. That they're getting hit with that second mortgage or whatever the case may be, and it's case by case, with 15 years of back pay and penalties that they owe to these debt collectors. No communication from that debt collector in the last 15 years. This is completely illegal in my mind, and so we made that a law. And now the banks and debt collectors want to have a conversation to undo that. And the governor's team, as well as our leadership in the Senate, said, you know, Ayesha, what do you think? And I said, this is the strongest protection we have in the nation. And it was highlighted and flagged as that by many different publications across the US. This is a growing problem and California now has the strongest laws to protect people. I want to go on to the limits of HOA fines. We have seen people in LA Times actually wrote about this, where there were people that live in HOA communities that were getting hit with $500 per day fines. We limited that to $100 with time for the person to fix any error that violates the HOA agreement. And also, unless it has something to do with the safety and health of the area and folks, that the fines are basically capped at 100 bucks, period, with the opportunity to correct the mistake. The person that brought this up was being charged $3,500 a week because they were being charged $500 a day. They were going completely broke and possibly even on the verge of bankruptcy because they could not afford these fines and could not fix the problem fast enough. I want to also highlight that we increased the renters' tax credit, quadrupled it for the first time in decades. And this is to give renters a leg up. I'm, when I got elected, I was the only renter in the Senate. And we know that we have significant concerns there and it's very hard to kind of explain what renting is like today. So I just want to highlight some of those things. But also, in our district, we were told that schools that are trying to sell off land are having difficulty to prioritize affordable housing. So we expanded the Surplus Land Act and, and much more. So this bill, and I'm not going to go through everything, but it has so many different pieces that help develop homes, help streamline some of the red tape that cities, and, and I'm not saying our district, but definitely throughout the state of California have. Making sure that affordability is one of the biggest priorities, making sure that consumers are protected, as well as, you know, giving some money back to those that are the most vulnerable. Our fastest-growing demographic amongst our homeless population is actually our seniors. So it is a personal issue to me just because I faced a home foreclosure with my family and I don't want to see more and more people on the streets and we need to make sure that people stay housed longer. I will also highlight SB 262, which expands what stable housing is. Stable housing is pro-housing. HCD has this designation called pro-housing. And we know so many students, you know, sleep in their cars. We know that, you know, there are so many cities that create homeless navigation centers and safe parking zones and much more. And we think that smaller cities, for example, today, Sunnyvale is now named a pro-housing city. And it's designated that, and I'm very proud to have been able to work with HCD to grant one of our cities like Sunnyvale that, but also Hayward, another city in my district, the pro-housing designation. This helps the cities compete with funding as well as technical assistance, as well as much more when, you know, we are not necessarily at the population size of Los Angeles, Oakland, San Jose, or San Francisco. So I really want to fight for our smaller cities and really give them a level playing field. We did a number of different things in housing in disaster areas. And I've carried a number of bills that got signed. All of these were signed, so I'm very proud of that. We can go on to the next slide. All of this in our 2025 legislation, besides the SB 681 that got rolled into the budget, all of the bills in front of you were signed by the governor and now official law, except for SB 257, which I think many of the women here would, you know, be upset to hear. It basically would have allowed women who discovered that they are pregnant to be able to apply for, let's say, better health insurance or for the first-time health insurance, specifically around the fact that they are pregnant now. And that's a qualifying life event, in my personal opinion, and I think many others. That bill was vetoed specifically for cost efforts. But we got a number of other bills signed into law. For example, we have wage theft judgments. That was a collaboration with the Santa Clara County to make sure that people who work for their money get paid for the work that they have done. We also protected disabled spouses on the books. Sadly, it was that rape is illegal unless your spouse is disabled. There was an exemption there. We removed those exemptions. We worked with Women's Coalition in Santa Clara County to get that bill passed. We also have worked to ensure that we are capping insulin, co-pays, and much more. If you take a look, we have worked on a wide variety of issues with our law enforcement partners, with women's groups, with health groups, and with consumer groups. And the reality is that most of these bills come from my district. I do not need a lobbyist to tell me what's going on. We specifically know and hear directly from our constituents and we are here to serve our constituents. So happy to go to the next slide. I've only been a state senator for roughly now three years. And I will say that we have had a number of bills passed and signed by the governor. Just last year alone, we had 16 bills signed by the governor with 11 of them being bipartisan. And we continue to work across the aisle. You know, good policy is good policy. We tackled retail theft. We tackled a lot of mental health issues. We tackled some labor issues and much more, including new technology like artificial intelligence and protecting children and women in particular, who tend to be victims of these types of crimes, as well as our seniors, of course. So very proud of the work we continue to do. All of these bills are signed and again, many of them originated from our district. Next slide. So for Sunnyvale, I want to be very clear. We have done a significant amount of events. You'll see some photos with our mayor, of course, our police chief and some of our, you know, chamber members and, and much more. We have also brought a significant amount of money into the city as well as the district. You know, $1.75 million for a safer walking and biking infrastructure near Lakewood Elementary, $500,000 for the county of Santa Clara regarding re-entry Resource Center, just recently a million dollars for land acquisition for a family shelter, and $10 million for the World Cup that will be happening in this district. And I'm, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that is an opportunity both for an economic boom, tourism, and much more revenue being generated in every single local city that we are working on. Happy to go to the next slide. And so, you know, some of the things that we talked about, you know, I've already mentioned some of the money coming in, local investments, but also for our public transit and something that I'm very proud of, but I still think we need more funding for it. The Children's Holistic Immigration and Representation Project. Some of you guys know I grew up in the foster care system. And people with different immigration statuses, especially children, are placed in front of a judge and expected to know what their legal situation is. These are kids. And with the $10 million that we made sure that these children receive, it's specifically for a lawyer and a social worker, for any kid that is caught in the crossfires of our immigration system. It is not fair to put a kid who's a minor who potentially doesn't speak English, let alone read and write, to defend themselves. And, and I'm very proud of that work and I still think we need to do more. I did mention the World Cup. I meet with them pretty regularly. You know, this is an opportunity for the district from a economic, you know, setup. Our chambers, our local businesses, restaurants, and hotels. The city of Sunnyvale, I'm sure their hotels are going to be booked up and I want to flag that so the cities know where to focus on, how to generate some of the funds that are coming in. The World Cup will be taking place this summer. And it will happen for about two and a half weeks. And it's something that we are all going to be impacted on when we're talking about our transit, our law enforcement, our hotels, our restaurants, sales tax, the hotel tax, and so much more. So there's a lot of opportunity here and we want to make sure that this is not only successful, but the Bay Area Host Committee stays for the long term. So we can go on to our next slide. Again, this is previous funding that we have brought in. And I want to highlight that I primarily try to focus on infrastructure, housing, and social safety nets. These tend to be the most costly and also the hardest to receive funding for. And of course, it always goes up every year with inflation and much more. So I am committed to making sure that the money that we bring in serves the entire district as well as the regional efforts and partner cities and much more. So for example, you know, for the city of Hayward, we made sure that the hospital and the fire department receives funding because both of those institutions serve the larger area, not just Hayward. So that's kind of the mindset that I have around this and we can move on to the next slide. And, you know, we have Elizabeth from my staff in person for you guys. If you guys have any follow-ups and want to have a one-on-one conversation. But my office is here to specifically serve our district, specifically serve you all. So if you guys have questions, have constituent cases like unemployment, our food security issues or much more, we are happy to answer any questions and help navigate, you know, the state departments that kind of handle some of this stuff. So happy to answer any questions you guys may have. I want to flag one thing for Sunnyvale. SB 79 that was passed into the law, I will say that I- SB seventy nine that was passed into the law, I will say that I originally voted no on. It had a lot of problems. I still think it has some concerns. I have met with our mobile home parks in a very large meeting. I was able to secure before the end of the legislative cycle the commitment from Senator Weiner in writing that he is committed to me and, you know, my concerns regarding very specifically the impact on mobile home parks. We have a cleanup bill that we will be introducing this year. Hopefully in January, and I want to flag to everybody that our mobile home parks are very much a part of our community, and I identified the concern first and foremost, informed the Sunnyvale lobbyists and Sunnyvale team. And so our mobile home parks are actually very happy with kind of the solution we have. The only reason why it was not amended into SB seventy nine originally was because the legislative process has deadlines, and it was already past the deadlines. But we are committed and we have informed the mobile home parks and residents that we are moving forward with this. So again, happy to answer any questions and here to serve you all. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Dr. Wahab. Thank you for all that you're doing. I just want to say I appreciate, you know, this update. We do need to take a quick recess. Sorry, sorry. Before we get to questions and we, I know council has a few questions for you. We need to take a five minute recess, and then we'll be coming right back. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene. And we'll bring it to council questions of our senator and our assembly member. Council, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to start with? Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Senator and Assembly Member. One of our residents, resident groups contacted your office about food desert in northern Sunnyvale area. They're looking for some kind of help from the state. What are their option? Either of you or both of you, please. Thank you.
Senator or Assembly Member? Is is Senator still there? Assembly Member?
Thank you. Thank you, Merely. What specifically, Councilmember, you said about food insecurity?
This is
Food deserts, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. There I've also had many constituents, particularly in Sunnyvale, but throughout Silicon Valley email and contact my office. We've had a few legislative inquiries regarding our unintended consequences of many of our housing first policies is is really the destruction of a lot of local small business and retail that I know the many of our cities rely on, not only for livable, walkable, bikeable communities, but also for tax revenue. And I've met with several constituents, and we are actually planning on reviving a law that has been attempted before to provide tax incentives and grants to housing developments that are moving forward that retain grocery, retail, square footage space, so that we are not unintentionally creating food deserts in our communities. That's something that a few of our northern Sunnyvale residents have greatly been affected by, and it's something that we are, we will continue to see throughout the state of California if we're not addressing some of the incentives to keep our local grocery and mom and pop stores. And so I'll be introducing a bill in January to directly alleviate that concern and work with my colleagues in the State Senate and the State Assembly to be bringing up this issue. But there's a lot of different ways to solve this problem. You know, beyond the bill that I will be introducing, but we'll be sure to keep you updated on that, Councilmember.
Thank you very much, Assembly Member.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Malinger.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Srini Vasan beat me to the question. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for your efforts on this topic, and please let me know if there's anything I can do to support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, and you can learn more at my Policy and Pancakes event at the Sunnyvale Senior Center in January.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sal.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Assemblymember Arons and Dr. Senator Wahab for coming today. Throughout your term, you both have been very present in Sunnyvale. When I talk to my constituents or people in Sunnyvale and they have issues, then the next thing they said is that they've been talking to Assemblymember Aaron's office, his staff, or Dr. Wahab's office and staff. And they've been getting advice and reassurance. And then next I hear that there's going to be a bill. And so for you both to represent so many people and to be so present with people, it's a testament to your service as our elected officials. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing. Keep doing what you're doing. Our constituents really value that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Next up is Councilmember Chang.
Thank you, Assemblymember and Arons and Dr. Aisha Wahab for presenting tonight. I had a question for Dr. Wahab on if you could expand a little on SB six eighty one, the surplus land act expansion. If you could just speak a little more to for how it impacts school districts and how they can utilize that.
Yeah, so it's funny because we have been seeing a decline in student population and enrollment. And all of our local schools are struggling with the funding algorithm that really, you know, the local schools, especially K through twelve absorb through student attendance. So with that, one of the things that we kept hearing is that a lot of the local schools are trying to sell off certain pieces of land. The surplus land act, the way it would work is that schools that are seeking to sell off land, they would have to prioritize that land being sold for affordable housing. And some of the schools are able to be able to prioritize workforce and teacher housing as well as student housing, depending on, you know, what project they're looking at. So the surplus land act originally did not cover schools in in particular. And it also allows, it it works in a couple of different ways. The schools are able to not only prioritize affordable housing, work with the local cities that usually deal with land use issues because the local schools don't really actually do land use. And like I said, they can do teacher housing slash student housing. But also that housing can just be affordable housing for the general public. It depends on their project. It depends on what they're trying to do as far as development and potentially having a third party kind of take over the land and and develop it, which is not the business of what education institutions typically do. So that is a big piece of it.
Great, thank you. And this question might be for both of you. Thank you for the information about this past year. If you could give me a little bit about what you envision, what you see as you go back to Sacramento in January, what the what the vibe is going to be like.
I'll refer that to our seniority, Senator.
So number one, I think that both Assemblymember Arons and I deeply value our district, right? And I think that that's one of the biggest things that you guys can see this. You know, Patrick said it, I said it. A lot of the effort is really bringing our real life issues to Sacramento, and I think that that's a big missing piece in Sacramento. That's first and foremost. So we are very deeply in the district, hear from constituents what are is tend it tends to happen, what is going on in their lives, what are their concerns, as well as our elected officials, right? You guys as city council members are the closest to the people on a day to day basis. And so having that, you know, correspondence with you all matters. I will say that, you know, one, we're doing a cleanup to SB seventy nine. I am more than happy to work with Patrick on his effort because he also lives in the area that some of the constituents talked about regarding the food desert. But one of the biggest concerns, I think, for this upcoming year is backfilling, preventing, reducing the impact of the federal cuts. I think that that is going to suck the oxygen out of the room. And there is no way that the state of California, including our massive budget that we have historically dealt with, is able to backfill any of the cuts that we are seeing. We have heard just more recently announcements in HUD funding being cut, and I think that's going to tackle really our lowest income housing needs assistance programs, right? We are going to see obviously the the cuts for HR one. And that is, the way that bill was even written is that the cuts will also come even after next year. Right? And I think that the larger public is not ready for that, let alone the state of California. The research cuts that we have seen from educational institutions and much more, when we are talking about the cuts that are happening that really impact our semiconductor slash advanced manufacturing industry in this district. I think we're going to see cuts across the board that we want to minimize. And so I think that our budget is going to be the biggest decision that we are going to make this year, and that's at least what I'm going to be focused on. But of course, our bills, you know, we have a number of bills that we're interested that protect, again, the most vulnerable community members.
And I'll just add quickly that, you know, I agree with the Senator on all of those points about what we are facing and what is coming at us. A lot of that is going to be hard to explain and show our constituencies about, you know, preventing more damage from happening while also trying to increase opportunity. And that's the balancing act that the Senator and I are working on in Sacramento. And let me just also acknowledge even without the the federal cuts, which are immense and difficult to tackle next year, I think we also need to acknowledge that we need to be more focused on delivering on the affordability concerns that we hear, you know, through our constituents who are calling both of our offices, who are meeting with at our farmers markets and our community coffees. And that's, at the end of the day, we are a two thirds majority, super majority state legislature legislature as Democrats. But we're not focusing enough on the true affordability concerns and actually being able to bring down the cost of living and really addressing those concerns. And so I'm going to be working with anybody, regardless of party, regardless of where you stand on some issues or others, we have to come together, whether they be progressives, moderates, Republicans, Democrats, to lower the cost of living in our district. Arguably, our constituents that Dr. Wahab and I represent feel it more than anywhere else because of the stratification of wealth in Silicon Valley not being equal. And we do need to have hard conversations in our budget process about lowering taxes, about finding other solutions. It can't always just be a tax increase. We need to talk about government efficiencies and the eighty plus billion dollars that we give away in corporate tax breaks, but don't always do a good job at seeing if they are actually doing the things that they set out to do or a litany of other issues. And so it all boils down to how do we make things more affordable for folks? And so that's what our Silicon Valley delegation can and should be focusing on this next year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have a few questions, but I'll just wrap up. First, Senator Dr. Wahab, you talked First, Senator Dr. Wahab, you talked a little bit about the Surplus Land Act for schools. Does that also apply to private schools, or is that only public schools?
It's, for the most part, all public schools. The private schools is not necessarily taken, because that could be private land, a private corporation, and much more, so they don't have the same statuses, if you will.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then I wanted to also give you an opportunity to talk about the potential food deserts in North Sunnyvale, and conceivably things that might be done from your side to kind of work on that problem.
Definitely. So I think our Assemblymember addressed it very early on when it was asked. More specifically, he's going to introduce a bill that kind of addresses some of the concerns. Obviously, he lives in that area, so we are going to be supporting our Assemblymember in that effort, number one. Number two, I do just want to highlight that food deserts were talked about, but the definition of food desert is a federal definition, and I want to be very clear about that, because people throw out these definitions, and they don't actually know what they mean legally. Definition of a food desert is that you do not have a place to receive food for up to a mile, right? So if it's beyond a mile, you don't, there's nowhere to go, right? You have to go beyond a mile to get food. That's not necessarily the case within our district, and I want to be very clear about that. There are certain parts that we do see, but those definitions are very hard to change at the state level, and I want to be very clear about that. I think what our Assemblymember is proposing and some of the efforts that we as the state have already done regarding food security and making sure that we have laws that also say that convenience stores and some of the local shops provide fresh food are smaller efforts, but I will also say that the food industry is a very difficult industry to crack, when we're talking about our agricultural industry, or, you know, food health and food security and the funding behind it. I will say that when we had the federal government shutdown in this past month, you know, the state backfilled what was missing from the feds with $80 million of an investment, a surge investment. And when you take a look at the 58 counties that we have in the state of California, that $80 million doesn't go that far, right? But $80 million is a huge investment. And that's the sad reality of what we are dealing with, and there are counties that are far less affluent than the district I represent and Patrick represents. But our main concern has consistently been our most vulnerable community members that actually rely on these services and need more. So we will continue to kind of prioritize that, but like I said earlier, we are also faced with significant budget cuts that are going to affect people's medical, and that's going to go into effect this January, right? Let alone food security, housing, and much more. So it is a balancing act that we're going to have to play, and we're going to be on defense this year, in my personal opinion.
Thank you, and I appreciate, appreciate your perspective. Thank you for your work. Next up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and this is for Assemblymember Arons. I have one other follow-up question after this. You mentioned affordability, and that's going to be a central, a central part of your agenda next year, and I greatly appreciate that. Are there any particular initiatives that you're planning to spearhead that you'd like to highlight?
Thank you. Well, I think that what the conversations that I've been engaging with as a member of the Budget Committee specifically is really entering into the conversation about what we are doing with our corporate tax breaks. Like I mentioned earlier, we give out over $80-plus billion in corporate tax breaks every year in this budget, and many of those tax breaks allow for high-wage income earners and good union jobs, a litany of other good corporate jobs that add to our tax base, which is, which allows California to be successful, to stay in California and keep jobs in California, which is a huge priority for the Senator and myself. But many of them, we're not sure if the tax break is doing what it says it did, or maybe it was doing as intended 30 years ago, but there is not a comprehensive, transparent way in which these tax breaks are reviewed. And so rather than go back to the voters to ask for tax increases continually, I think we need to enter in other solutions, and those should be reviewing our budget, going line by line and seeing if these tax breaks are working so well, then these organizations should have no problem coming before the public and defending how well they are working and how many jobs they're keeping in the state of California, or whatever the incentive that the taxpayers are helping subsidize them for, and seeing what is working, what isn't, what type of dollars, public taxpayer dollars could we be saving as we review those programs, instead of going back to the voters to deal with the urgency of meeting the moment, as the Senator had mentioned, with the federal cuts. And I think we need to be nimble, and all options need to be on the table, and the solutions can't continually be tax increases on working-class, middle-class people, as I have seen more and more of. We need to be doing a balance here and ultimately addressing affordability issues, as we have continued to hear that from the residents of Sunnyvale.
Thank you. And my second question, this is for...
I'd like to add that as well.
Money we pay in taxes.